John Fink.
John DeLeo.
Nelson Gil.
Patrick Lyons.
Thank you.
What do you want to do?
Well, somebody might be watching.
That's true. I thought we were gonna...
Always an opportunity.
Might be watching.
Always a possibility. We can have a poll. The next area of business is adoption of the minutes from the June second meeting. Is someone...
So move.
Second. Are there any, uh, any discussion, additions or corrections of the minutes? Hearing done. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is a final plan review for a major use site development and subdivision of new and existing structures entitled XL Space for Rocky Pond LLC. Proposal is to construct a four... Four, is that four point three?
Forty-three.
Forty-three, okay. Forty-three unit self-storage facility, a one point seven six acre parcel, tax map seventy-five, lot one eleven dash one, located at one thousand Bangor Road. All of the subject property is located in the drinking water zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Stephen Salisbury.
Go ahead, please.
Um, no much new to add since our last meeting. I corrected an error. Check out there at page fourteen.
The narrative, and we have letters from the Maine Historic's, uh, commission, and a letter from natural areas. We have the DOT entrance permit to utilize the two entrances. And we have a letter from John's accountant showing, demonstrating financial capacity. So it should be complete.
Thank you. Uh, question from the board? From what I understood, the TRT people were happy with all the changes, or such as they were?
Yeah, everything's been addressed.
Yeah. I looked at the minutes and saw nothing that was outstanding, so I'm good. Okay.
So Steve, on the entrance permit, on the DOT permit itself...
Yes.
That specifies a location, is that on the site map, is that the one, kind of like on the southern edge of the, of the property? Cause there's two, there's a...
Yeah, no, they permitted both.
But the, but the permit itself, DOT permit, just gives one...
Yeah, they give a distance. The application was for both, and I think one of the conditions talks about both entrances. It does, yeah. Need to pave, um...
Oh, okay, yeah, both access points?
We must pave both access points.
Okay.
To the right-of-way line, which is what we show in the hatching.
I guess, well, I have one other question, more for Tom. It has to do with the, with the ten thousand gallon cistern.
Yep.
Concerning the fact that the council has started a discussion of cisterns and sprinkler systems, and may or may not continue with that regulation, how does that...
So the only thing that was discussed, um, was potentially taking out the sprinklers for the moment out of these, um, section seven point three, seven point five, um, until the state fire marshals has a chance to review the verbiage that they have set forth in that, and then leaving the hydrants and the cisterns in place for the fire protection. Out of the last meeting, nothing was acted on or, or anything like that. Everything's still in place as far as what's in the ordinance, it's gonna stay. The only thing that's gonna change is, is that Elena and I have been working on is, is adding in the definition between a major subdivision and a minor subdivision, and what the actual fire protection requirements will be. The state of Maine legislature just put out a notice for review of sprinklers, residential sprinklers, to see what benefits and costs and stuff like that there is out there now. So there's works, inner workings of that, and we're kinda trying to hold off until we hear, see what the state wants to do as far as, are they gonna, are they gonna push the sprinkler system, or are they going to set it aside? Because right now, if I, you go to any, any of the NFPA since two thousand eight, NFPA one oh one, there's actually a section, a section in there that says, says, "All new residential buildings will be sprinkled." The state of Maine did not adopt that one section. So that's why now we have, the state has do, is doing this research to find out the cost analysis and cost benefits of sprinklers.
So there are different sections for residents versus commercial property?
Yep. So...
I just didn't want it... You know, this applicant or any other applicant's coming...
Right.
In the near future to go to the expense of putting in a cistern...
Oh, no, absolutely.
And the city council say, okay, yeah, we're gonna...
So this being a commercial property and industrial, that it requires a certain level of fire protection. But as far as cisterns go, that's not gonna get taken out of the ordinance. If anything, it'll be, the sprinklers will be taken out for the time being. And that vote goes, that goes in front of council on the nineteenth, I believe.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? If this is a public hearing, any member of the public may comment on this matter? Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing done. I shall close the public hearing. What would the board like to do? I move that the final plan for major use site development and subdivision of new and existing structures entitled XL Space for Rocky Pond LLC be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Item four has been withdrawn by the applicant. Uh, are there any staff comments?
I have several things to give you updates on, if you don't mind sticking around for a few minutes.
Well, we are pressed for time.
Yeah. The first is something that I sent out this afternoon, something that Vice President DeLeo brought to our attention. I don't think it requires any action, certainly immediately, maybe not at all, but it's just a new addition to state law, um, how DDP deals with decommissioning plans for solar. That would apply to projects that, that they review under the Site Location Development Act. So only really the larger ones. Um, the city goes, you know, they're not exactly the same, but they're similar requirements, and we require them for medium-scale and large-scale projects. So that can be as small as, under two thousand square feet, but something that small is probably just, like, an accessory to a single-family home or something. It's not, it's not gonna be subject to those requirements anyway. One of the interesting...
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. One of the interesting things that they do include is they have, um, they specifically look at if you are decommissioning a system that's over farmland, like designated farmland, then you have to make sure everything's removed to a certain depth of soil, which I think is a smart...
I think they specify forty-eight inches, I think.
Yep. Yep. So, just providing it for information.
And our, and our, our thing right now is actually more stringent than what the state is proposing?
It is in terms of, like, the size of project.
Yeah, but not the farmland part.
Right. We don't do the farmland part, um...
Okay.
Otherwise, they're very simple. It's basically make sure you have enough money...
To do it?
Yeah. So I think we're all set, but thank you, John, for bringing that up.
On our, on our financial decommissioning, I mean, I think the agreements that, that Ed writes up and they, and they sign, has in a clause that they review it every year, but that isn't necessarily in our ordinance, is it? I didn't see it.
I didn't see it in there, um...
Because the new DEP one says that the, the financial figure should be updated every fifteen years, which I think is ludicrous.
Was that, so for the state one, is it only financial that they... Oh, yeah. Fifteen years, and then every five years?
I just wonder if, in our ordinance, we should specify a time period, just to make...
So I don't know if it really matters. I, that was one thing that I couldn't find here either, so I asked Jana Richards about it, because I know that we had received, like, an updated, um, bond or something from a previous project early this spring, but I wasn't very involved in it. What she told me was that it's the financial institution is wanting to know each time it's renewed, like, are these numbers still valid? Um, and that that is what is prompting them to be reviewed and resubmitted to us. So DEP's fifteen years is a different, I mean, that's their own.
Mm-hmm.
It's not that we're requiring somebody to send us something every year so much as it is the financial institution behind it. It's my understanding. But if we don't, if we don't say anything on it, then... Are you saying that there's been a clause worked into the language even though it's not in the ordinance? Or you just know that it's been discussed?
I think it has been, but don't trust my memory to anything.
I mean, not having seen one through yet, I haven't really seen all the language, so I don't... It's not familiar to me yet, but, um, I think being silent on it, that lets people do what they need to do.
I mean, I thought Ed put language that had to be added every year, but...
Like in a draft, um, draft language that we give them, maybe?
That's pretty much been in Ed's ballpark.
Yeah. Well, I foresee a potential one more, two more coming in the next few months, so I'll get an opportunity to look at that. And those that, you know, have gone through our process already, and either have received their site law permit, or perhaps are still in the process, I didn't look to see if there are any that are kinda in limbo there, but if they haven't started construction by October, then, um... Yeah, if they haven't started construction by October, then they're subject to the state's new rule. But that's up to those two parties to figure out. And then they'll also handle it, but as these systems, if they're transferred from one investor to another, DEP is supposed to be looking for that information as well, so...
Would our medium-sized ones trigger SLA?
They wouldn't. Well, yeah, no, they, I don't think that they would. Our medium size is between one thousand seven hundred fifty square feet of panels and forty thousand, so just under an acre. And it looks like DEP is using the three-acre structure threshold for SLA for solar. Although I know, at least the couple that I have some sense of here, have been over twenty acres anyway, so... That's another threshold for site law.
Any other, uh, questions? You don't have any more for us?
I do.
Oh, okay.
And we can get into things to the depth you want to. I mean, I just made some notes, things I felt like should share some updates, but, um, since we had talked about comprehensive plan at the last meeting, I think. So the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget was approved with thirty-five thousand dollars in there. For comprehensive plan, that's, you know, meant to be a first chunk of funding, and two, maybe three years of funding such a thing, but I don't really wanna take three years to do it, so... So now we know the budget is passed, it's really there. Jana and I have had some brief discussions about how to approach it, and I've just kind of started thinking about it. I haven't dived into, um, you know, how exactly we're going to do it, but I started collecting, like, some examples of requests for proposals for consultant, you know? How do we wanna form a committee? How do we wanna approach a timeline? So honestly, just starting to turn it over, but, um, you all, if you're, you know, anxious to get going on it, can look to the state law for the requirements and the old plan, um, and the resources that the state has. Think about who might want to really get into it and, like, be a member of a, I would think probably a subcommittee of the planning board that brings in other citizen, or other residents to serve on a specific comprehensive plan committee. So if there's two or three of you wanting to really head that up.
Well, weren't there several subcommittees last time?
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it, I mean, that's all...
Like, by topic area almost, or something like that?
Well, that's all kind of the, that's where we need to go to next, and soon, honestly, as soon as, you know, all the other things that need to be done immediately are taken care of is, you know? Especially where we only have a first year of funding and not enough funding to do an entire plan. How do we, as we also kinda discussed last month, like, how do we wanna structure that? Do we wanna do a few chapters and the rest? Probably makes the most sense, but, um...
Can you send, um, links to the state's stuff?
Absolutely.
If you would.
Obviously, it's my first time doing it in Maine, and it's kind of my first time doing the whole thing in general, so...
Well, it'll be as useful to you as it is to us, then.
Exactly. I mean, I've been involved in a few different plans, but, um...
So I, I gather it'll be your main effort, then?
Yes.
Ooh.
Well, I'm looking for, like...
John's back!
I think it's a big effort, because it has been so long and so much has changed in this city. But I think it's exciting. I think it'll be a very satisfying thing to see through, and could be a very enlightening process.
And a necessary thing to do.
Yeah, very, yes. It's necessary, and, um, you know, there was an article in the paper last week that had some kind of random quotes from me, but, um, you know, one of the things I was trying to emphasize is how much it's meant to be a participatory process, and we wanna get as much comment and, um, make sure we reach everybody who wants to provide their opinion, so... And it can be, you know, the, it can be as big as a vision for a lot of things, or just a vision for, here's what we need to update in our regulations, so... Be able to point back to it for another ten, and hopefully not twelve to fourteen years, or... Seventeen?
Seven, I think. I think it was two thousand four, or I mean...
Yeah!
That sounds right.
Yeah.
Wow.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah. Well, I mean, things really have changed, and, um, Jana and I were just chatting about something else this morning, and she was like, "Oh, I think when the census numbers come out, we'll be nine thousand people." Really? Maybe, so... If that's the case, that's like thirty-something percent of growth in twenty years. So it's big. You already kind of covered a lot about the chapter four topic. I've been involved, even though it's not a planning-related ordinance, um, chapter of city code, but it is one that is referred to several times in the subdivision ordinance and the unified development ordinance. So, um, also having a, a brand-new chief come on in the past two weeks, I just, I wanted to be there to help too, so I've been assisting with that. It doesn't have much effect here, but as Thomas kind of said, it seems like one of the solutions might be to, um, exempt minor subdivisions. So those that are four or fewer lots per our definitions, and/or do not involve the creation of a new road from having to provide water supply in the very prescribed way that chapter four establishes. There's still requirements of the subdivision ordinance that are derived straight from state law that talk about having a sufficient water supply for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. So that's still one of those subjective, um, findings that a board needs to make. So I think that having the options makes, um, gives, I mean, they, they are options, and they provide a clear path for a developer to do that, but regardless, we're gonna be deferring to, um, the fire department on the topic of water supply for firefighting. Drinking is a different conversation, but...
Kind of along those lines. At some point, I'd love to see some, I mean, accurate figures on cost, 'cause I think some of the figures that were being thrown around to the council were for shock value.
So the ones I was throwing out were accurate. I contacted American Standard, and I've also Steve Salisbury, and...
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand's about your minute, it's your basic price for a cistern, and that's, that's everything set and cover back over. Goes all the way up to twenty thousand, that's when you start talking, you're putting in a mechanical pump and stuff like that to push the water. But in our case, it's, it's all static, it's all static water. Uh, as far as zupnor systems go and stuff like that, for the price figures and stuff, the sprinklers, it's their, the price that he was throwing out were, didn't seem realistic. I mean, you're talking, if you're talking that kind of price, you're probably talking something that's ten, fifteen thousand square feet of a home, you know, and then they have everywhere garage, basement, attic. But the thirty thousand that was being thrown out of the meeting was, uh, cause he's trying to, cause it, we looked it up, and it's about eight thousand dollars on one of the projects that he's working on right now, which is actually a fairly substantial home. I think it's five bedrooms, uh, two and a half bath, two-car garage attached with a three-car garage, car garage detached, with a full basement as well. And he was talking just the materials alone, it's eight thousand dollars. Well, okay, so if you're talking eight thousand dollars just in materials, you're probably talking another five or six thousand or so in labor costs. So you're almost, you're almost right at the same price as what a cistern costs to put in.
But aren't some of the areas that just mentioned, like garages, don't have to be sprinkled, do they?
No.
Just the living areas?
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, if you can put sprinklers in the garage, then that's your choice.
Right.
Yeah.
I think another thing that really didn't get said at the workshop or the council meeting and in relation to those numbers is, um, they're being thrown out as simply an obstacle and not something that is adding value. So when a house resells and it has this amenity, you would think that that is captured then, so... Or the benefit to a homeowner's insurance costs, which I was told today that back when, um, these options were created in two thousand eight, that part of it had to do with, um, people's frustration that they're building homes or buying homes and couldn't get homeowner's insurance in parts of the city, which is a surprising thing to hear. I don't know, um, how much that happened, but, um... So we're working through it. Um, yeah, the council will be taking it up again on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
But I don't know that a decision will be made that soon, because we don't actually have the amendments in hand, so...
The idea, the idea behind it is, is that I want my ordinance for subdivisions to match planning subdivision ordinance. So that way, it's not what she has is different from what I have, and I'm fighting her, and that we're on the same page, because NFPA doesn't really separate subdivisions. It sits there and gives you a dwelling or a structure, and then it refers you to NFPA eleven forty-two, which is, uh, water protection for suburban and urban areas. And it just gives you a mathematical equation that you gotta figure out what the square footage of the house is, and that tells you how much water it's gonna take to put it out. And then it refers back to the EHJ. So with this, with all the planes coming through the planning office and the planning board, if mine matches hers, then we're more united on our front as far as the, as the office goes. And it makes it a little easier, because hers is followed through the state. So then I can back out by saying it's true, it's from the state, so...
I would also suggest, from the developer's point of view, that would be an advantage, because then the developer knows what has to be done and...
Yeah.
Doesn't have to figure out between ordinances.
Right.
And then you don't have to be talking about it in front of the applicant.
Right. There are some instances where, um, if you get, like, a minor subdivision, and they put apartments in those subdivisions, then it triggers a whole different thing in NFPA where they have to sprinkle and stuff like that, and that's not a choice. So regardless, if we have it in our ordinance or not in our ordinance, if they put in apartments, they have to sprinkle per, per the NFPA code. So there's, but we wanted to get it a little more clear in the definitions of what a major's, major and a minor is, like, we have in our plans here. And then that way, when the applicant comes, they know exactly what they, which category they fall under and what they need to do.
Right.
There's also just an idea that I've shared with Thomas, that, um, that's as far as it's gone right now, but we don't really know, like, the council seemed to indicate that they would be okay with the suggestion of exempting minor subdivisions from providing some type of water supply. But...
Including a cistern? I mean, totally eliminating any fire protection?
Yeah, I think that's still maybe to be discussed, but...
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, we were talking, like, the other things we're talking about, like, um, XL storage. In theory, per ordinance, they should have, they should be paving, because it's industrial, commercial, and per ordinance, it says that it's supposed to have a all-weather surface that's paved. And the thing was, is that we looked at it as, okay, it's got good pavement, doesn't have a lot of runoff, and knowing John Bates and the way he is, he's gonna eventually pave it, and then probably sooner rather than later, knowing him, 'cause he doesn't like anything dark. But taking those kind of projects and sitting there going, like, okay, we understand you need to put a cistern in, let's look at your other costs, maybe we can sit there and not pave this particular section or this area, and as long as you bring it up to the current city standards, as far as a road could be, that could be paved later by a future developer. Looking at that to kind of entice people to wanna put the fire protection systems in, in lieu of having to pay for a, for the cost, for the cost benefit.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going. So, yes, they might exempt minor subdivisions from having to do something completely.
The council also might be wise to take into consideration whether an insurance policy would be written without fire protection.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, obviously, it doesn't apply to existing lots that are far out, so... That's kind of their rationale, but, so, part of my concern, or part of mine and the manager's concern, is that that might not be enough to satisfy their concerns of just exempting small, little subdivisions on public roads.
But isn't, like, just reading what's in the paper or whatever, I mean, Elsworth is one of the few communities that adopted the sprinkler, the, the fire protection for residential houses, is that correct? For, for new, for new residents?
No. Only for subdivisions.
Okay, for subdivisions.
So they put it in the paper that was, and they, we actually had him correct it immediately, because she quoted that, um, we have for all new residential construction, you have to have your house sprinkled, and we don't have that. We have it only for subdivisions, and that is the developer's choice of which one of the three options. And if he chose, the developer chose sprinklers for that subdivision, then it gets put in their deed, and then the people buying the lots know that, okay, I gotta sprinkle my, my house. But if you say, if you go and you go buy a house right now, anywhere, that's not in a subdivision, there's no requirement to sit there and just sprinkle. Because I can't force you on your own, on your own home, or your own land that you own, to sit there and to do that. But if somebody's creating infrastructure and creating more houses and, and stuff like that, so like, um, in certain areas that have, like, fifteen houses down in there, and you're twenty minutes away from here from the station, we have no water supply, we have no way of pulling water from the lakes or anything like that, we need something there on site. Sprinklers are the best option, cisterns are an okay option, and then hydrants are, are a decent option as well. But I, we know hydrants only work well within town, or within a water district. And then cisterns are decent, because we have ten thousand gallons of water on site that we can draft off while we're waiting for mutual aid to show up and start dropping dump tanks and start dropping water again, so then we can start fighting the fire. In theory, sprinklers are the best option, because they'll actually suppress ninety, ninety-five percent of that fire before we even get there, so it gives the person, the people in the home time to get out, and as well as it will protect that one room from creating any more heat, and, and that heat spreading to set in other areas to then catching on fire.
So I think what's happening with that right now is kind of, I think the council's in a reactionary, trying to solve a problem mode, but for a larger conversation, slower or longer timeline, what I had brought up is, you know, maybe there's a way to provide an in... Provide an incentive if you choose sprinklers, like maybe. If it can work with the other codes, maybe you don't have to pave as wide and you, you know. If they, and that, and that makes a logical connection because if the building is sprinkled, it's less urgent to get. A whole bunch of vehicles in there because they're preserving life. So that's just one thought, but just something that. Um it wasn't even just my thought, it was recommended somewhere, but um that's where I see it could tie in. To your processes more, cause really the whole thing is occurring at TRT and under the review of the fire chief and the fire inspector.
And one of the other things I know you brought up in the last meeting, John, was. Um not enough adequate fire protection, especially for Denver Trails where we only had one ten thousand gallon cistern for twenty-eight units. Um one of the other discussions was is that if the planning board does not feel that there's adequate. Fire protection or something else along those lines, that you guys can, you can bring it up and ask and recommend that they do it. Um because to be honest, I didn't feel that ten thousand gallons was adequate for twenty-eight units, as close as they were, but it meets the code requirements. Of the minimum of ten feet between each building, um that comes right out of the IBC book. Um and not only that, but and also our ordinance says anything every thousand feet, well, the whole run is only eight hundred fifty feet. So it's, it's one of those, in one hand and in the other, it's, it's like, I think there should be more fi- there should have been more fire protection up in there because. Once this building catches fire, it's just gonna trigger, it's just gonna catch the rest. And then we're gonna, we're gonna basically be chasing and then we're displacing families and homes.
How do you think one of the difficult things that I would have dealing with this is? You know, okay, how many houses in a minor subdivision and how many in a major, I mean, if. If the minor is four or less and the major is five and the major has to have fire protection and minor doesn't, it's like. Why not five and six, I mean, if it's good enough for five, why isn't it good enough for four?
Yeah, I mean.
That's a, that's our struggle, if we're trying to find that happy medium. And it's really, it's really a, a struggle trying to find that happy medium and you got, you know, trying to appease everybody and, and try to. Appease the developers to wanna build and, and stuff like that, but my thing is, is that being a contractor myself, it's the cost of doing business. You know what you're getting into, you know the cost, you know it's an added cost that you're gonna have to do and you factor that into your overall price when it, when it comes to it. It's just one of those things where it's, i- if not, if you can't do that. Then you shouldn't be building, or you shouldn't be choosing that place or that particular area to build.
Well, that subdivision we approved up on one eighty went from, originally went from sprinkler system to. They came back and said, well, we're not, we're not gonna do the cistern, we're not gonna do the sprinkler system, we want approval for the cistern. And that was five, you know, five, six lots?
Yeah, there were seven and then four. Yeah, so well, that's another. Kind of process issue is um that developer came back and revised their plan, another one, Bridgetwin did the same thing. Um that's an option available to the person complaining to the city council, that they have, to my knowledge, not explored. So. Um yes, trying to find a solution that, you know. Doesn't upset everything, but that satisfies what's being asked of us, um is where we're at. And one of the concerns that I communicated to the council um is just, you know. Is this gonna have a effect on incremental development? Like if I can do a minor subdivision and not have to provide some infrastructure.
You're gonna do four or five minor subdivision versus one big one.
I would reiterate that the council might be wise to uh take a look at whether. Fire insurance would be available. Different scenarios.
Yeah, so it's all happened rather quickly and um. Yeah, that's one of the concerns that I tried to raise, um they. I also recently found the statute that makes it clear that a city can't just um. You know, repeal or amend an ordinance and nullify all the approvals that were granted. So we have plans approved by you that included some type of water supply and. Changing the ordinance doesn't necessarily just relieve them of that condition on their plan, um so. That's been uh something to communicate. Um but I wrote a long memo actually and gathered a whole bunch of information. On all of the subdivision related projects that have been approved since two thousand eight, so I'll share that with you all, um. I'm gonna try to make sure that it gets in the next council packet as well, but I'll send it to you directly, cause I think that.
Cause I just had a conversation recently with my homeowner's insurance and, I mean, they based their. My cost on how far you're from a fire station, how far you're from a fire hydrant. And if you're too far, you know, you, you can get insurance, I mean, you're gonna pay a premium. But you know, you're gonna pay twenty percent more than somebody right here in town.
Um the other thing, um a plumber, then just a regular plumber can install up to five sprinkler heads in a residential home. Without pulling a permit for the fire marshal's office or having a special license to do so. Um which is kinda funny because the same system that they're installing with those five sprinkler heads is the same system that we're ins- that we're having installed in these subdivisions. But once they go past five, it triggers um a permit and a special license essentially through the fire marshal's office.
That sounds like a sum that should be changed.
Yeah, that's why it's, it's a work in progress, that's why we don't wanna make any changes as of yet until we can get um some clarification. Or a change down at the fire marshal's office with the wording and verbiage. Um one of the other things is, is that Mike Haney is a partially come out of retirement to help us. To become our representative for Uppenor again, for the uh sprinkler systems to help inspect. Um down on Neville Shore and any other projects that we may have um for the time being. Um and this buys um Uppenor um the chance to find another representative in this area to take over. Uh while Mike is sitting there helping get some of these uh projects moving along. Um there's only one project that has been in limbo. Um uh down on Neville Shore, the other ones haven't, the other ones are just getting ready to start groundwork now. So um which is good, which is good in a sense, but there's no other projects on, on the uh board right now. For that particular style sprinkler system, um all the others require a full thirteen R, or sorry, full thirteen sprinkler system. For all the other projects that we have right now, so.
So Mike falls under the heading of best laid plans, huh?
Mike was my uh hail Mary and I please, please hope, please come help. Cause he retained his nice at two for sprinklers and um which we were gracious enough, we contacted uh. Uh the fire marshal's office, Gerald Leach, and we got him to accept that and um Uppenor sent a letter. Um it's already been signed to reinstate Mike, Mike's gonna work um through the fire department as a um consultant essentially. And do the plans reviews for it and then go do the inspections and the, for the time being.
So it's getting resolved, um.
Kinda sounded like Mike just wants to get out of the house.
About every other week, he's on a fishing trip right now. But no, he did, he did wanna help us out, um and it definitely did help us to be able to push this stuff forward. And we're hoping to slow down enough to where we can have more of these meetings with you guys to get your input. Um for the best laid plans, so what we think would be best for um to put into the prevention ordinance. As well as for any other projects we have coming up that may be a concern as well.
Have you more for us?
Just a little bit, um so a totally different subdivision topic, um something that. I caught on to a few months ago, but I kinda wanted to let the projects in process get through their process, um. In, and, and I think that. So. Um certain things that I've seen in recent um projects before my time or things I remember from before are making more sense. So in twenty nineteen, state law changed to say that a municipality can't like expand the definition of sub. Division beyond what is in state law and what is in our ordinance does do that. So reviews like um not long ago, we had basically an office building. No residential units, um and required uh subdivision review of that. We should not be doing that, um we could have filed uh. Something with the registry of deeds to have, have a grace period and all of this stuff, but even that, even the grace period ended this year. So my, my intent for practice for the time being is to not require review of projects like that. Um it does still apply when there's dwelling units involved, um. So I just wanted to let you know that in case something happens and you're like, why is this not getting reviewed, it's just like this other one that was reviewed. But um basically the subdivision ordinance is not consistent with state law, um so. Yes, we should change it, there's a lot of things we should change also, um so I think at least not applying that is. A safe medium step for the moment, um there's also. This has been in there longer, I think much longer, um. Projects that aren't land subdivisions, that maybe are division of dwelling units in a structure. Can be reviewed under the site plan regulations and I know. Um especially as I was looking through old projects for this chapter four um issue. I know that at times at least, maybe not always, there was a practice of doing that, just reviewing those. Uh residential structures under site plan. Without looking to the subdivision ordinance, but it needs to, the site plan regulations need to be at least as strict as the subdivision. Regulations and this is something Dwight and I had talked about before he left and. Um he differed with the previous planner on that about like which one really was strict enough. And really, it should be up to the planning board to determine that the site regs are as strict as the subdivision. And they're really not, there's a couple of things, um some of which would have come up or did come up with the Denver Trails project. Um like the information you need to provide about septic systems, the subdivision ordinance says you need to do it. The site plan regulations do not, so um I don't think we're quite there yet to send all of those just to site review. And not worry about the subdivision ordinance, but ideally someday we clean it all up and they can all go through. One review instead of two.
Could all be solved with my model perfect ordinance.
You've been hiding that?
Yes. The regulation consists of one word, no. Easy to understand, easy to enforce.
Yeah, well, it's either no or yes.
Yes involves many questions.
But then where does everybody live?
Not my problem.
So those are the.
I have my house.
Close the door behind you. Um so those are the big things, uh I don't have any updates about adult use marijuana, I think somebody had asked about. Or um shoreline zoning either, I haven't even touched it, it's been so busy, but um. The marijuana part, that's really kind of in the manager and council's hands. We had talked about doing a workshop for, like a joint workshop, joint workshop for the planning board and the council. Um with the office of marijuana policy to just get educated and, you know, get the council ready to take whatever action they wish to take. Um and then we'd need to develop some regulations here, but um we haven't scheduled a workshop, so I'm not sure why yet.
NFPA also did put something in there, um NFPA one-on-one life safety codes for marijuana uh used dispensaries. Um stuff like that just passed here, so that is, that's out there as well for regulations on my end. Um due to the high uh velocity of the materials that they use, the lights, the wattage, the heat. Um and then what they call the um chatter, it's basically. Where they take a bottle with um not, with acetone and basically flip it upside down and let all the juices run out and it extracts. The stuff out of the marijuana and then they put it onto a plate, well, the problem is that that, basically essentially they're making a bomb in their hand. Um and so there's, there's a, so they decided to put that in, uh into the regs for us to enforce as well for the fire safety standards. So that's something else that we'll probably have to review and look at if we do do anything with marijuana. As far as fire protection goes for any facility that comes in for planes review.
Well, we have had people call our office and ask what's going on with it, I would like to locate in Ellsworth, so. Um hopefully we make some movement on that, at least to have an answer, um so. That's really all, um you know, thinking toward the future, um. Summer's not a great time for making workshops and amendments and everything, um I think, you know. Maybe in future years, it would be nice to do some goal setting at the new year or whatnot, but if there's any, you know. If you have a willingness to do, um aside from the adult use marijuana or um any of those things that might be coming anyway. If there's any desire to do like a workshop in the fall on any topic or just general, I mean, we talked about a lot just now, um. I guess let me know, something I'm thinking about to you and um obviously we'll have to get moving on the comp plan process. So that'll be big.
I assume there are no my laws to sign.
Oh, there are.
So why aren't they uh? Why don't we have our own copies when we can sign them? Or we could entrust you with ropeless steps.
You know, I've thought about that.
For another day?
Yeah, I mean, can't just switch that now, but I'm sure we could adjourn and sign them after adjournment.
Or, or we could um have a different requirement in the ordinance for a signing fee.
That doesn't seem all that.
Cash or pizza? Anyhow.
Is there uh, is there any questions for me for and um for our fire prevention ordinance that you guys would like to see? Or like to try to see changed?
Specific to what's going on for the council?
What's that?
Specific to what's going on?
Well, I'm trying, yeah, we're, uh Chief and I and Elena filed the ground pretty hard and trying to just. Go, we told them that we're not taking anything out, we're just gonna clarify major and minor subdivisions and. Hopefully that will resolve some issues, but you know, this, it's coming, it's, and we've tried to explain to them that. You know, NFPA one-on-one has it already in there for residential units that have to have sprinklers. It's just a matter of time before the state adopts it and so it's, you know, why go backwards? So I just wanted to see before we get ready to write, to write it up and present it uh in a week or so. If there was any questions or concerns that we can try to address.
Yeah, like I said before, I, I think a big thing in my mind is gonna be cost issues, I mean. Real accurate figures on cost of sprinkler systems versus cost of. I mean, ten thousand gallon system seems to be the, the golden thing, I mean.
Yeah, one ten thousand gallon.
I think Black House was supposed to have more than that though, wasn't it? I, I know they're coming back, but.
Uh they are coming, I think they, that's something I gotta talk to Elena about, they did change their plans, um they are. Uh we just did their um hydrant test the other day for the sprinklers, um and everything met and checked out, so they're gonna sprinkle the building. Um and then they talked about they may potentially put a uh ten thousand, ten thousand gallon cistern out, out front as well. Um but I don't know where that's going now because before the sprinklers wouldn't meet the cri- uh the right requirements for each head. Now they do with this, with the new math calculation that they just did and the testing. So they may not put the cistern in, but either way, they still gotta come back because they changed their plans, they shrunk the building. They're not, they're not gonna do as big of a building, so they're gonna have to come back and uh do an amendment to the plan.
Yeah, so I anticipate. Yeah, so I anticipate-
Accurate cost figures for fire suppression would be crucial.
Yeah, I tried. I tried to get, um, there's seven on the main state, um, fire marshal's website for Upanor Systems that installs them. I couldn't get one of them to reach back out to me. And then we couldn't get, um, Chris or Jesse to accurately say what it actually, the intended, what the actual cost was either. So the best I had was what a, what a cistern cost from head to toe and that was thanks to American Standard and Steve Salisbury on that one. Um, but that's about as good as I can get for, for that, unfortunately. I'd like to have an actual, true, accurate answer of what the price per square foot is. Um, they say range is anywhere between two fifty to four fifty a square foot is what, uh, what they're doing, so. But that was two years ago, that price figure, so. It's hard to tell them which, which way it's leaning, unfortunately. But I, I would, as soon as I do, I will reach out to you and let you know.
Okay. Anything else to bring up? In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, no, hold it. You're actually at my laws.
Yes, you do.
I would entertain a motion that as soon as the my laws have been signed, that we adjourn. What you just said. Is there a second? All in favor, please? Okay.